Good evening, bonsoir, bienvenue à la réunion plénière. Welcome to the committee of a hall. Ms. Parker, do we have any declaration of conflict of interest?
There was no declaration of conflict of interest.
Perfect. So we have two presentations this evening. On a deux présentations ce soir. We'll start with the Bathurst Music Festival update by Eddie Edwards. Mr. Edwards?
First of all, thanks for allowing me to come back and report back to you on the music festival. Basically, it was a great success. That's the short version. I assumed you wanted a bit of a longer one, so I'm going to go through that. The performers were diverse, to say the least. The skill sets ranged from very simple to absolutely brilliant. And the age range went from about seven up to the eighties. I put that vague upper limit because I was too embarrassed to ask people how old they were, but they looked to be pretty old. I catch what was mostly from Bathurst, but we did have participants from as far away as Charle. And when we started initially, we thought that we might only have a limited number of participants for a number of reasons. The three-year absence of the event, the fact that many schools would concentrate on their core subjects post-COVID. A lot of the tutors, the private tutors, had also just restarted their classes. As it turned out, we were very pleasantly surprised because we had a great response. I've collected a number of pictures for you to give you some idea of the diversity of the music, the speech, the vocal performances, and the range of performers. We went from the sight of a little boy standing in this huge stage playing a complicated beat on a snare drum to a young lady who played a Haydn's sonata in major, in D major, brilliantly without any music. It's just awesome. We had ensembles, solo vocalist orchestras, the cast of the musical Mamma Mia. And we had choirs from elementary schools and high schools. Young people playing grand pianos that kind of dwarfed them, but they got up and did it. It was also great to see people there who'd taken up instruments later on in life. I met a retired couple who'd never played an instrument before. They're retired, but they'd joined the community band, and they're both playing brass instruments. And that was great. We also introduced a new aspect to the festival where adjudicators actually went out to venues, to schools, so they could hear performances on-site rather than dragging them into the venue that we were using. We'll explore that and we'll develop it further next year because we might even incorporate pre-recorded live performances and live streaming as well so that we get as many people involved as possible. One of our biggest costs was the cost of adjudication. Because we're under the provincial board auspices, we have to abide by their fee structures. And there's fees, travel, accommodation, and subsistence. And to be honest, I was skeptical about how much we were going to pay these guys, but I was blown away by the adjudicators. They were just tremendous. They were very... The way they dealt with the performers was superb. They were supportive, they were encouraging. They took the time, actually, after each performance, to go up on stage and go through the performance again and show where they could improve and enhance. And then when the performers tried again, you could see the difference. It was very, very positive. You'll be pleased to know that a number of our musicians actually were put forward to go to the provincial finals later this year. So that was great. The weather tried its best to do what it usually does and it tried to disrupt the event, but we had warning and we were able to rejig and accommodate that. So we weren't too badly hit by that. The other thing that was very pleasing, we were inundated by offers of help. We had more volunteers than we had jobs to be done, to be honest. But the volunteers were marshaled superbly by Claudette Roussel, and everything went smoothly. The committee worked really wonderfully well together, and every member brought a different complementary skill set, and it made working on the festival a real pleasure. We had a debrief two days after the festival finished, and we went over every aspect, all the things that went well and all the things that we could improve on to make next year better. Now, I'm sure you want to know about the financial aspects of the festival. We covered all of our costs. We did that completely, doing no small part to yourselves, and we're really grateful for the grant that you gave us. In the past, we relied on small, multiple donations. This year, we didn't do that. We concentrated on corporate donors. And they were extremely generous. They were great. We were very fortunate. We made the admission to the events by a goodwill gesture because we didn't want to preclude anybody from the events for financial reasons. Some paid just the smallest amount they could. We had one guy that put forty bucks in because he just wanted to support the festival. So we now have a reasonably healthy balance for next year. The provincial board recommend that we have one year's costs in advance. We're not quite there, but we're pretty close to that now. So that's really good news. We're in the process of building a website. We've bought the domain names, we've paid for service space, and we're going to build a website with all the pictures from this year and with videos of performances so that people can go up and see what's going on. The 2024 festival will have online registration again, but this time they'll be able to pay the entrance fees online. They can do everything online, and that will make it a lot easier for people. We'll certainly be starting earlier this year, pushing it to get more schools involved and more people involved. And we're going to buy promotional material as well to make it look better. And I just think after the success of this year's festival, it's just going to get bigger and better. We really appreciate what you guys did for us, all of the help that you gave us, and especially the financial aid. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them.
All right. Well, don't forget to come back next year and ask for requests again.
You'll find me. Trust me, I'll be here. But thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Does council have any questions? No? Well, thank you, and we're really happy to...
Do any of you single play?
Pardon?
Do any of you single play? You could always join. There you go.
Jean-François does. Councilor LeBlanc, yes. Thank you very much.
On va y aller à la deuxième présentation. C'est une mise à jour du centre-ville de Bathurst. Madame Catherine Lantaigne, ancienne conseillère de la ville de Bathurst avec nous. Bonjour Catherine!
Bonjour, bonjour. Je vais juste préparer ma présentation. Bon, ok. Madame la mère est... Dear councillors, city employees, and people at home. I like to start with this picture. I know it's not winter, it's such a beautiful picture. I put it because it's Colleen Ramsey that took that picture, and every time I see it, I just find it so beautiful. Anyway, so I am here today to just give you an update of what we've been doing. I started with Downtown Bathurst in August of last year. And I thought, thank you so much, Amy Lynn, for taking me to do a presentation to you guys. So technically, so I put Downtown Bathurst, but our official name is the Downtown Bathurst Revitalization Corporation, Inc. Such a long name. So that's why I just use Downtown Bathurst, so people know who we are. So today, for the agenda of the presentation, I'm going to explain quickly who we are. I know that you guys probably know, but it's... I always take this opportunity to explain at home, well, people at home, who we are, just to let them know. Because it seems that sometimes there's some confusion about who we are. Then I'm just going to go over who our board members are, because we do have a board member, a board. And then beautification, various projects that we've been working on. And then I'm going to end up with the event. So everybody that's looking at home, take out your schedule, because there's going to be a lot of dates. There's a lot of things happening downtown. Donc, qui nous sommes? So we are an association of commercial property owners and tenants that are defined or that are within a specific area. So you can see on the map in front of you the exact périphérie. So the area that covers Downtown Bathurst. And so I represent all the building owners and all the business and building owners of downtown in that périphérie. So it goes from Harborview to San Andrews, and from Douglas and a part of Parkside Drive to Murray Street. So that kind of puts you in that square. So we are technically... Our budget comes from these people. So the levy, there's a levy that's charged to the building owners, and that is being put in a pot, and that basically consists of our budget for activities, events, and embellishing the downtown. So we do have four members. We have Sylvain Lagasse, président, Denis Roy, qui est le vice-président, Cathy McLaughlin, qui est notre trésorière. Aussi, on a beaucoup de directeurs. Donc, on a Andrea Duguet Cormier, Erica Lynn Scott, Zoé Arsenault, Melissa Ellis, Antoine Natar, Stephen Legessy, that represents the city, and Pauline Armstrong, that represents the waterfront. Because we do a lot of activities that we collaborate a lot with the city, but also a lot with the waterfront. So we thought it was good to add Pauline as an observer.
Donc, un au rôle, c'est au niveau de l'embellissement du centre-ville. C'est ceux qui nous distinguent des autres quartiers de la ville de Bathurst. Donc, on est responsable, par exemple, des lumières décoratives que vous voyez sur la rue Maine, comme vous voyez dans la photo. Ensuite, les fleurs. Donc, vous voyez, les fleurs, justement dans le milieu de la photo, les fleurs sont payées par le centre-ville de Bathurst. Bien sûr, on peut pas le faire sans la collaboration des employés de la ville. On est vraiment choyé. Je travaille très près avec Matthew Abernathy, aussi René Saint-Pierre, Pauline Armstrong. Donc, on a une très belle collaboration, puis je pense que c'est très important. Donc, nous, on ajoute les fleurs, mais ils sont maintenus par les gens de public works. C'est eux qui les arrosent, qui font sûr qu'ils restent en vie. Ensuite, on a aussi les lumières. Donc, c'est sûr que c'est installé, la maintenance. C'est sûr qu'on complique des fois l'avis un peu des employés parce qu'on a toutes sortes de requêtes, mais le but, c'est tout le temps de valoriser puis d'embellir notre centre-ville. Il y aussi les poubelles. Je l'ai pas oublié. Au niveau des poubelles aussi, vous avez sûrement pu voir pendant l'hiver, on a fait rajouter des poubelles sur les poteaux de lumière. Donc, on s'aperçait qu'il n'y avait pas nécessairement de poubelle pendant l'hiver, donc on voulait que le centre-ville reste propre. Ça fait qu'on a collaboré avec la ville, on a ajouté les poubelles sur les poteaux de lumière.
So we've been working on various projects here and there. So our role is basically to organize events, the city, the Downtown Bathurst embellishment. But also, we have random projects. I say random, but it's just we have different kinds of projects. You probably saw our Downtown Dollars passing by, and that's basically a gift certificate that can be used anywhere at Downtown. Again, in that delimitation in the map. We also... So I'm talking about Downtown Dollars. I'm going to do a quick plug. We are doing a Downtown Dollar Day. That's going to be held on May 23rd. And it's basically that the board has decided to release $5,000 of Downtown money to... At 20% off. So we have a cap. So technically, people can't buy more than 100 Downtown Dollars, but they are able to buy it for $80. So they save $20 right away. So that's going to be... We're trying this out. It's been done in the past, and it's done in other cities as well, but it's really to our way of really encouraging our Downtown merchants as well. We also had, in the past year, a patio grant. So every... It's something that we were able to get through the federal government. And so it was a patio grant where every existing patio in Downtown Bathurst were able to apply for a grant to extend their season. So that meant heaters, or it was extend and also like the part was also embellished as well. So there's some that has applied for lights. You'll see this as the patios are getting back in action during the summer. You're going to see a lot of add-on, and that's all the businesses that already had a patio in Downtown. So we've also been working very hard on a website. We used to be hosted under the City of Bathurst before, but now we're going to have our own website, and we've been working very hard to make sure that everybody's included. So it's still in the works. It's not public yet, but I'm going to give you a kind of a glimpse of what we've been working on. So we have here, and it's great collaboration with Web Solution, that's been doing a fantastic job. So it's going to look like this. We will have shop, dine, play, and the services as well, because all our Downtown members, we have lawyers, we have hairdressers, we have estheticians. So we want to make sure that we include everybody. But for the tourists, we make sure that we have shop, play, and dine. And on that website, we're also going to have key information that's important. So a calendar of events that's happening downtown, where to park, because that can be a question that people are coming from away, that they're looking for a place to park. So we want to make sure that it's easy to find. And the last part is going to always be changing, but we put explored it down, the waterfront. And we've also been working on an interactive map. So that's going to be an integrated part of the website. But all of our members will be easily found through our interactive map, and we'll be looking at putting QR codes in Downtown and also on the merchants' windows. And last but not least, so I just wanted to give you a quick update. Just I like to pop my face here and there, so you remember me. If ever I come and ask for fun requests or something, but anyway, I'm not asking anything tonight. I'm just giving you an update. And also, I'm really excited to share all the activities that are happening downtown. I am not organizing all of them. There's some that are being organized by, for example, the Chamber or the city as well, but I thought it would be a good place to just put all of the activities that I'm aware of, because I'm in communication with a lot of partners, and I really wanted to put it there so people can see it. And especially the city council, because I know you guys are really busy and you like to attend a lot of activities and events. There's some that's already passed, but we had the Snow Bear Fest, the Snow Festival. And part of that, we had the Snow Bear Festival. There was a snow sculpture on corner of King and Main. There was also a Kinsey. So for those at home or here that are wondering what a Kinsey is or Quincy, I'm not sure if I have the right spelling, but it's... It looks like an igloo, but it's not an igloo. It's a survival structure that is made. And it was like an interactive, but also educative, informative structure that we have decided to put at the waterfront. So again, like I was saying, lots of great collaboration with the city, because I get to ask the snow crew to help me build some big hills and all of that. So they take time and they help me out, and it's very appreciated. Because I work part-time for Downtown Bathurst, and I don't have any employees, so I have to rely a lot on asking for help. There was also a block party happening, and that was February. March, it was a bar hopping event. May 20th, there is LVNO 2.0 that's going to be happening at 13 Barrels, and that's organized by the Chamber of Commerce. There is also on May 23rd, like I mentioned, the Downtown Dollar Day. So I'll be at Caffeine, so 145 Main Street, and I'll be there selling the gift cards for Downtown. So it makes great gifts for your friends and family. Also, June 16 to June 18 is the Bathurst Rotary Rib Fest. So that's a lot of... That's an exciting activity that's happening downtown. Then we have hospitality days. Oh my God, there's a lot of councillors that's involved in this festival. So it's a great collaboration. We're helping by putting up with the parade and the car show. There's going to be... I know the committee has been working really hard on making this a possibility. So there's... It's going to be happening from July 15 to July 24th. So there's a lot of activities. There's the children's festival that's going to be happening, the block party, there's buskers, there's a pub crawl, there's a car show, parade, and fireworks, and much more. It couldn't fit in my grid. I had to pick and choose. August 19, I don't want to give too much away, but I know that the city is putting on a big Acadian party. There's also... But I don't want to seal any thunder, so I'm just mentioning that. And there's also going to be a block party. Then September 23rd, the Harvest Fest. Last year, me and Pauline from the waterfront, we collaborated together and we made the Harvest Fest even bigger, with all of her work and then the car show we combined, to the point where I received feedback from the Corvette Association, and they said, "We want to come and do, and bring all our cars and have meetings and meeting greets and do a whole weekend." And they wanted, no other day, I wanted to stretch it out and try to make another... They said, "No, we just want to be there during Harvest Fest. That was what we want." So the Best Western in Bathurst is already all booked for September 23rd. And Quality Inn, they already have lots of rooms. So it's getting really big, because we have the Corvette Association and the Antique Cars Association. So we'll be taking over Main Street and King Street up to 13 Barrel. Lots of cars. So put in your calendar, it's going to be big this year. So of course, we're going to have artists and artisans at the waterfront, just like last year. October 28th, trick-or-treat on Main Street. So we tried it last year, was great, lots of participation. People were coming from as far as Hamilton and the Acadian Peninsula to trick-or-treat with their kids on Main Street. So a lot of people that were walking around. Then November 7th, we're going to have our AGMs. I just confirmed with Best Western, actually while I was sitting down, that we are having our AGM at Best Western this year on November 7th. November 23rd, a really popular night, which is shopping night. Everybody's welcome, and so we're going to extend it a little bit. Usually, it finishes at eight. We're going to push it till nine. People wanted more. It was crazy last year, people on the street, and they were wanting to shop more. So we're going to give them another hour. We're going to test it out this year. So it's probably going to be from five to nine on November 23rd. And then lastly, the Christmas Parade. So I know it's really early, I don't want to be a bummer, I know it's the summer, but the Christmas Parade will be on December 1st. And so that's going to be a great parade. So that's pretty much the activities that I know of right now that's happening downtown this year. So I don't know if there's any question. I have put a few pictures. So the Quincy, if you were curious, is the picture here on the left. So it is... And it's like a shelter. So it was very interesting for the kids.
Well, thank you, Catherine. It's certainly interesting, and yes, it's nice to see that there's a lot happening this summer and throughout the year. And the Dollar Days are quite a success, which is really, really good. And especially the... It used to be the ladies' night, ladies' shopping night, but it's become just shopping because Captain's Cabin has amazing stuff. So now, now the men are following with the ladies, doing all the shopping.
Yeah, we opened the door to everyone, and we saw there was a lot of... It was really welcomed. We had women, men, everybody was shopping. So it's good. It's good for downtown.
Absolutely. We do have Conseiller LeBlanc.
Merci, Madame la mère est. Merci Catherine. Sérieusement, superbe de belle présentation. Both presentations this evening, very positive and just so much fun. Well, I think I'll speak for all my colleagues, knowing that we're involved and we're helping and getting results like we are right now. It's just such a joy. Your website idea, I just wanted to bring it up, idea. It's almost a given now, it's almost all done, but seriously, that is going to be so much fun for visitors, even locals. Sometimes you don't know, jeez, where do I go eat tonight? Where do... What's happening? What do I do over the weekend? Where do I want to go? Just have one stop shop where you can go check and have everything on the same website. I just love that idea. Your Downtown Dollars, I'd say, also be sure, I've seen this happening in other situations where you go into stores, "I'll use my Downtown Dollars," and the articles on promotion that you're going to buy, they all know that you can't use that for that because it's already on promotion or whatever. So I don't know if you want to have a talk with your Downtown merchants about that, just to clarify that if you're selling Downtown Dollars, that either they always apply or make it clear that they don't apply on products already on sale or on promotion. So all in all, just thank you, and keep it up, keep up the good work, and hopefully we'll continue to collaborate like this for many moons to come.
Thank you. Counselor Honduras.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Catherine, for your presentation. I love the idea of the shopping downtown, bringing me back to my youth when I used to live not far from here. And when we went shopping, we shopped, there was lots more stores, Zellers, Camer... Dolphins and all that. So we started at one end of Main Street, and we walked away all the way down to... We were Sears at the time, back in the day, and it brought back, especially that Florida to show with the snow there. That's the type of weather that we used to go shopping in, and it was just incredible. I enjoyed the vitality and the youthness that we have in our city now, especially since the boulevard opened and the bar and the terrasse. It just brings back, I remember so many memories when we had the wogues back in our day and stuff like that. So it just bringing back, and hopefully it'll keep up. Keep up your good work, and we're here to support you. So if you need anything from me personally, or I can't speak for my colleagues, but I'll be there for you.
Thank you. And I'll definitely be reaching out to the Beautification Committee. I have the names. I have lots of ideas. I don't know if there's a budget attached to it, but I have suggestions for sure, because we're seeing all the opportunities. With the board, there's a lot of things that we can improve or do, and I'll definitely be reaching out. Amy Lynn sent me the email a while back. It's still in my... I know exactly where to find it with all your names on it, and I'll definitely reach out as soon as I have a little bit of time.
Merci beaucoup, Catherine.
Continue beau travail. All right. Changing my mouse now. So we'll head down to 3.1. Ms. Parker, city clerk, we have a couple of items.
Yep. So item 3.1, Aquatic Center Commission Proposal of New Member. So we had another person who was interested in being part of the commission. Mr. Kevin Benoit submitted his interest in being part. He's interested in the present and future products of the Aquatic Center. He previously worked for the Aquatic Center as a lifeguard, as well as lifeguarding for other pools and beaches. Mr. Benoit also has participated in many swim team activities for the past 12 years and still swims frequently. If members of council are in agreement with him being on the board, we'll bring it to the next meeting.
All right. Yes? There's still room for a few more members, so...
Yeah. I believe he would be the seventh member.
We'll be needing one more, I think, right? They're looking for at least eight? Well, we're getting there. Oh, Councilor Honduras?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just got a question. I know that the previous president stepped down, so has there been an election to re... To elect a president, or...
I'll go to Councilor Legessy, since he sits on the committee.
Yeah, we had an election at our first meeting. Dan Doucet is the new president, and he's been doing a fantastic job right so far. Right now, it's basically to get all the ducks in a row, try and figure out what the current situation is. And they are working on... They want to come and do a little presentation and say what we've been up to. I know that the city had put certain requirements. I don't know if you've received the financials yet. I know they're going to be sending it for the first quarter there. Some time, so the city treasurer's working with them on that timeline. But no, we have... It's nice that we're getting all the interest, because the very first meeting, we had just enough for quorum and just enough to fill the four board spots. So there was... Everyone pretty much had to take something. So now it's giving a little bit more leeway, and if ever somebody can't make it, we can still hold the meeting. So that's the positive.
Sounds good.
I'm looking forward to it. Seems to be quite a nice team, and the president is quite knowledgeable, so I hear nothing but great things right now. All right. Second item.
So item 3.2, Bathurst-Chalors Special Olympics Fee Waiver. We received a request from Ms. Lorna Daly, who is the regional coordinator for the Bathurst-Chalors Special Olympics. Every year, they offer their athletes summer sports, and she's once again asking members of council to consider waiving the rental fee associated to using the track and soccer field located behind ESN. Their request is to have the fields every Wednesday evening from the end of June to the end of August.
And we've done it in the past years for Special Olympics. Any objections? No? Oh, sorry, Counselor LeBlanc.
Is that what we gave them in the previous years? Like, the amount of nights and everything matches, so...
Yeah. It's the same as last. We're good with that? All right. We fall under policies. Politique 331, P1988-2, Révision des politiques en matière de gestion du personnel et des avantages sociaux. Mr. Pediger?
Thank you, worship.
Thank you, worship. This is a change with regards to the CAO bylaw. Uh, that authority now lies uh in in the processes laid out in the bylaw. So this was a committee in place to go for fringe benefits, health benefits for staff. Um, but that is now done through our HR department through the CAO bylaw.
All right. Any questions? No? Okay. We'll move over to three point, three point two, P one nine eight eight dash zero nine, Organizational Revisions.
Thank you, worship. Uh, this is similar with regroup to our policies and with the new CAO bylaw. Uh, the structure allows for the HR department as well for major changes, but also allows uh in the bylaw lays out for anything that council would approve the structure and anything above a certain level. Uh, so this is uh with the CAO bylaw and with the policy, both and both are covered. So we can repeal the policy now. We have the CAO bylaw.
All right. Any questions? No? Okay, we'll move on. Um, Mayor and Members of Council, so Adopt a Street by Counselor Knowles. We have an update. Counselor Knowles?
Thank you, Madame Mayor. Just to let our new councils, uh counselors aware of what the Adopt of a Street and Hydrant Hydrant Program is about. The Adopt a Street Program or Hydrant Program endorsed by the Bathurst City Council is designed to allow individuals, community groups and businesses on an opportunity to support efforts to encourage participation and to beautify our community and reduce litter along our roadways. I believe it started in nineteen ninety-five. Correct me if I'm wrong. Somebody might know that. Would you know when it started, Ricky? Counselor Handas? I think it was nineteen ninety-five. I'd like to thank all the all the individuals, businesses and community groups like the Kinsmen that have been in this for a long time. So it's a real good project and very worthwhile. It's nice to see that it's coming back. Uh, so having said that, I'd like to propose that Mayor Chamberlain and Council become part of this program in twenty twenty-three by adopting a street or streets within our city boundaries. I don't know which ones we're gonna select, but uh it's gonna be good. So I'd like somebody to second that motion.
Oh, okay. Yep. Seconded by Counselor Scary and followed by Counselor LeBlanc and everybody else.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I think it's a wonderful idea. I think we're all in on the Doppa Street or Streets. Maybe one or two Streets. We'll see. Um, and then we'll let we'll let everybody know when we're out there cleaning the streets. So we need to pick up trying to figure out which street and what's already adopted and what's available for us to. All right, we'll try to do that before the next public meeting next week so we can tell them which street we have.
Yeah.
Counselor Legacy?
Yeah, I just wanted to uh speak a little bit on that as well. Um, May twelfth, Shannon Levine from BHS is organizing a whole army of students to go across the city. She's involving um ESN this time around. She's sending certain high school students to Terry Fox and all the other schools to help be leaders to do their areas as well. So if you see them, honk for support, be careful driving around and uh if you can help out any way you can, it's uh they're doing a great job.
So it's this Friday afternoon.
Yes.
And I will be there. I actually booked it in my calendar for the afternoon. Counselor Knowles as well. If any of you are available, I know it's not easy because, you know, we work full-time and you know, we leave at six o'clock. So by all means, we respect if you have to work, or for the ones that can be available, I will definitely, I put it in my calendar, part of volunteering. So um, yeah, I think it's wonderful that they do it every year and especially now that they've, you know, included ESN. So uh that's a great thing. Counselor Handas?
Thank you, Madame Mayor. Um, coming back to Counselor Knowles's suggestion that council pick a street. I have a couple of streets that I think we could do. I think we do a part of Main Street. I think the Main Street from the um House of Lee going to the mill, Aldeo Electric does it, but I think that from House of Lee down to uh Douglas, nobody does. I think that would be a good one for the city. Uh, there are a lot of painting, fire hydrants, poles, all that good stuff. And the other one I'd like to see us do is St. Peter Avenue. It's long, but it's nice and I I I've been doing a lot of driving around and they have at five, at six o'clock in the morning. So I I I kinda know what street would be good for us to do. There's a few fire hydrants there that need to be painted too. And you know, the Kinsmen were doing ours, I think, this weekend. So we do Yehaw and we have thirty-two fire hydrants to paint. The Kinsmen Club doesn't know that yet, but they will. But uh, yeah, no, I I uh, we should lead by example when it comes to this project. Uh, I've been involved with this Adopt a Street now since I've been in council. Uh, it's getting a little bit bigger. Uh, Counselor Knowles and we had a conversation on that before when we were filling in the uh the registration or the uh the application was so difficult, people would go halfway and they'd just stop it because they were pretty much asking for blood. We've simplified it. Um, Mr. Pettigrew and his team have been working on something online that is amazing. So once they have it up and running, maybe Mr. Pettigrew can give us a little bit of an update. It'll actually, it tells you what streets are taken. You'll be able to click on street. Uh, St. Andrew, it tells you how long it is, uh, all that good stuff. So and uh I think that we can only move forward with this and hats off to Mrs. Levine there for taking that that project on. Um, and you know, and it's nothing for us to put a plaque up summers for those students summers and one street there because that's how we uh we show our support. The city pays to put signs up there for uh for for whoever decides to to get that road. Um, I'd like to see us, you know, we have eight hundred and some fire hydrants there and if anybody's looking to paint a hydrant, call me and I'll get you the paint. I'll deliver it to your house. And um we need, we need to be leaders in this. So I'm hoping that the day that we decide and uh nobody has a hair appointment or nobody has to go for coffee, make sure that you're there and available. Thank you so much.
Thank you, uh Counselor Knowles as well. So it's really nice to see that, you know, we're doing a few different things and it's gonna be interesting this summer. Um, before, I have a couple of proclamations, but I I am going to mention this quickly because next week is going to be a very busy week, very uh, the public meeting is gonna be quite quite busy. So last week, we started Tampon Tuesdays with Bounce One O Four Point Nine and I am going to challenge the city. The Multicultural Association is the nonprofit uh partner with Bounce One O Four, including Superstore. So Superstore actually has a basket for all sanitary products for young girls. And they started this in Nova Scotia with Bounce in the area and they've started it last year for the first time uh in Bathursts. It was a huge success. And at the end of May, so every Tuesday, they are pushing for the, uh, they called it Tampon Tuesday. It's the slogan. But it's for all sanitary products for young girls, which will be delivered to the schools and to the um I'm forgetting the name, the um, the food bank, but yeah, the food bank there at the area. So if anyone is doing the groceries at Superstore or anywhere else, you can come in and drop in uh and drop any type of ladies' sanitary products. A lot of young girls actually miss school because they don't have the money to supply themselves with sanitary products. It's uh proven and it's 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 sad. You know, they save food bank for for food, but for young girls, a lot of them do miss school because of it. So if you're at Superstore, please take the time, buy some products and drop it in the basket. You can't miss it. And every Tuesday, Bounce does a live um video on what's been gathered and I know that a lot of businesses, so I'll be challenging businesses out there as well. And what you can do is you can contact the team at Bounce and maybe you can be one of the businesses that you'll be dropping everything in the basket. The Multicultural Association Board dropped two hundred dollars worth of sanitary products in the basket. So we're adding a challenge. Let's double what we did from last year. We will go straight to a proclamation. Disability Awareness Week. So Disability Awareness Week, May twenty-eight to June third, twenty twenty-three. Whereas the municipality of Bathursts is committed to assisting citizens with disabilities to participate fully in our community and whereas we believe that more citizens with disabilities should have the chance to access disability-related support to improve their opportunities in New Brunswick and now therefore be it known that I, Kim Chamberlain, Mayor of Bathursts, do hereby request that citizens of Bathursts to join with the council in recognition persons with disability and their role in our community by the observance of Disability Awareness Week, May twenty-eight to June third, twenty twenty-three. Intergenerational Day Canada, June first, twenty twenty-three. Whereas the Intergenerational Day Canada, June first, raises awareness about the power of making simple, respectful, intergenerational connections. Whereas Intergenerational Day Canada, June first, celebrates the good things presently taking place between generations in local community. Whereas Inter- Intergenerational Day Canada, June first, is an official reminder, a yearly invitation for every citizen to take one small respectful step to bridge generation with his or her local community. Well, this adjourns our meeting. I wish everybody a great evening. Thank you for joining us on Facebook Live and we'll see you next Monday.